Good afternoon. I called the meeting of the Liberty County Board of Commissioners to order. Mr. Brown, has the meeting been properly advertised?
Yes, sir, yes.
Thank you, sir, and good to see you here. We now have our prayer and our pledge. I thought I saw Reverend Frazier. Did I see him?
Yeah, he's in the back room.
He's just visiting. We're gonna invite you if you will come, sir, and leave our invocation, and followed by our pledge. Since you're in the building, put your name on the record. Your daddy would be proud. I got him now, y'all. That'll stand out by invocation.
Let us pray. Father in heaven, we thank you again for this grand day that you've granted unto us, a privilege that we could not have given to ourselves, but because of you that we are here. And we want to thank you for life, health, and strength. And now that we're here, we speak blessings over everyone that's here. But then, God, we ask again for your instruction, your guidance, as we come together to do what is best for Liberty County. We pray, God, that you continue to give us the wisdom that we might follow through on what you are saying concerning this county, a place of freedom, a place that you desire to inhabit. We thank you now, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, that was divine intervention, sir. That was divine intervention. Thank you. All right. Listen, I'm supposed to announce that there is a game tonight between Sneltson and, let me get it right, two of the middle schools. So that we will know, Middle and Miller versus Sneltson, six o'clock, Liberty County High School. It's a playoff game, and the winner will, ah, okay, the winner will kind of be the Liberty County Middle School champ. So they're inviting us to come to Liberty County High School. So I'd like to attend some of that if our.
Yesterday.
Yesterday, yeah. Just found out.
So what are you trying to say? Hurry up?
Just found out. Just found out.
Push into it, Jerry.
We're gonna move ahead, and then we'll start in five minutes, two minutes later, okay? We're gonna move on, though. Mr. Samantha, come and talk finance to us there.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm here this evening to report on the county's December 2023 financials. At the end of December, we have collected approximately 21% of our revenues for the year and have expended 45% of our expenditures. We currently have .75, a little less than one month of operating expenses in our unreserved fund balance. This is a little down from last December, which reported 1.1 months. Looking at the year-to-date general fund expenditures, there are currently a few departments running slightly ahead of schedule. However, we do not anticipate any of these departments exceeding budget for the year. We will continue to monitor these and reach out to those department heads if needed. The governing body and elections encourage some training and travel expenses near the beginning of the fiscal year, which is kind of showing small-ish overages through December. The General and Judicial Administration, this is those CGRDC dues, always paid at the beginning of the fiscal year, so this department will show over budget each month until we get to June. Judicial Administration, Superior Court, District Attorney, these are showing ahead of schedule just based on the timing of payments to court reporters and books and periodicals, but we do not expect these departments to run over budget. Animal Services had some vehicle repairs in August, and additionally, they are experiencing increased costs for animal food supplies. This is just, this is just up. And we'll have to watch that one. Hopefully, that account doesn't run over, but possibly might. So hopefully, they can come up with some savings in their other line items. Community Services, this was for the cost for the Employee Wellness Fair that was held back in October. We're still waiting on some grant funding, but we are expecting it to come in to cover a portion of these, and this department will not show over budget once that comes in. Lastly, the other financing uses, this includes primarily our 2022 bond money. Currently, we're still paying on and trying to finish up the Miller Park Fire Station, and we have until June to spend the rest of this bond money. And let's see, turning the page to solid waste. At the end of December, we're showing a little net loss, $100,000. However, in the coming months, January and February, this will turn around as we start collecting on those solid waste assessments. But through December, we've collected 43% of our budgeted revenues and expended approximately 46% of total expenditures. Additionally, there are no departments in the Solid Waste Fund that are currently showing over budget. For our special revenue funds, one department, our victim witness District Attorney, is showing a little ahead of schedule, and this was for some dues and fees and some fuel costs that are currently over budget. But we'll work with this department to manage any overages as we get closer to June. And now on to the SPOS reports or the sales tax reports. Our revenue for Sales Tax 7 for December was $1,115,000. This is our largest collection month so far. Since this SPOS began, we have collected 8.5 million and spent approximately 1.3 million. On the next page, T-SPOS, for December, we received $1,041,000. And since the inception of T-SPOS, we have collected over 35.5 million of the total 54 million. We've currently spent 16.4 million on T-SPOS projects.
Samantha, I'm trying to remember. So December proceeds are from?
Two months ago.
Two months ago.
October. October sales, was that right? October sales tax and then collection, and then they go to the state, and then it's the next, is it one month and then two months to the cities?
Um, yeah, I think it's actually collections from the prior month.
Prior month.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So you get December 15th would have been for November proceeds.
I guess that's gearing up for Christmas and.
Well, I hope they didn't spend it all out. So we'll have the same kind of month.
Exactly.
When we have the next.
Now, I think January skipping ahead, I do think was another great month, so.
Chairman, I wanted to interrupt you there for a minute. The District Attorney, what we're looking at in the red, is that shared through the circuit, Joey? Is that just our portion?
That wouldn't necessarily, you know, the chart's a little quirky there. They're not really over budget at any point. It's just that they're running ahead of a schedule. So if you took their budget and divided it by 12, ideally, there's an amount you would spend every month. All this is saying is they're running a little ahead of that ideal number, but they're not over budget. So, and that's caused, as she said, by stuff either having a heavy month and not being a 1/12 month, so to speak. To answer your question, though, if there would be a loss, it would be shared by all the counties. We would bill them, yes, sir.
You've got also in that the the Superior Court and the Judicial Administration. And I was just wondering, is all that lumped together?
No, sir, separate.
I noticed they're all in the red, and that's the reason why I was asking. Is that shared throughout the circuit? Because when we budget that, we budget for the circuit, correct?
On those, you do, yes, sir. But they're not in the same division, obviously. But yeah, we get a Circuit Court budget. We get a Circuit Administrator budget, and then we get a DA budget, which of course, yeah, they're separate, but they're all circuit-wide.
That's all I had. Mr. Chairman, thank you, sir.
Mr. Samantha.
Hey, yes, sir.
On the T-SPOS, if we look down at the Interstate Paper Improvement, Mr. Brown, like I said before, we need to go ahead and schedule a meeting with them, find out what their intentions are.
Sure.
Because I don't want to see that kind of money sitting up there, and they're not going to use it. Over a million dollars.
Going back to T-SPOS, we received $1,041,000, collected 35 million on our total 54 million, and that will be collected through September of 2025. And we've currently spent 16.4 million of our T-SPOS money. The last thing is I have included the Sales Tax 6 report, just for reference, just to see kind of how our projects are coming along. And we have approximately 7.5 million left of our Sales Tax 6 tax money to spend out. And that's all I have for December. Do you have any questions?
I'm trying to project the T-SPOS earnings.
Okay.
Based on?
What month it's going to expire and that kind of thing. So it's a million-ish, a little less than a million on average per month, and we are at 35, so 15 months from December. March of '25, is that right? No, wait, well, March '25, April '25, somewhere in there. Which is, you know, before our sunset date. If it stays at this 901 million a month.
Yeah.
But it's been trending that way, certainly.
Just wanted.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Richardson, I appreciate your help on the response to the emails I sent this week.
Yes, sir.
Really appreciate that. But on the, I guess, the second page for revenues, how hard would it be to itemize these? You know, like you got charges for services, and that's, you know, almost $3 billion. And I'll just, would, how hard would it be for you to give me a report? You know, what totals, you know, what goes into that total? I mean, if it's, you know, going to be a long drawn-out process, I know you've.
No, no, no. So our RGL, our General Ledger, is broken down into these categories, so I can run any segment of the revenue or all the revenues, and yes, sir.
Yeah, I just got a few that. I just want to know what entails in that.
Sure.
And I'll send you that email and know.
Okay, yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I did have a couple of questions. Were you finished, Commissioner Gilliard?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I just want the lag time on the tax revenue, property tax, because I know they were due.
Yes.
Is it like two months?
So we received some in January, and then we received a lot in February, so we are.
It's catching up?
Yes, absolutely, yes.
Okay, so when we get next month, we receive next month's, you know, right now, we're like three-quarter months behind, but it'll.
January, it'll still be low, but it'll be a little better than December. But February, we'll be back to flush and back to good. Yes, ma'am.
And Mr. Brown, do we have any amelances on order right now, or do we have them all in?
We do. We got one on order that's in the shop and should be coming out of there by March, April timeframe. We've got a box redo that's also in the shop there, so those ought to come out in the spring.
In the spring.
Sometime.
Two.
Yes, ma'am. That'll put two in the service immediately, and then we're putting together a proposal for two more, since there's such a long lead.
Right. Okay, all right, thank you.
Will that be two additional, or are we going to rotate one off?
It'll be rotating. It'll be rotating.
All right. Anything else for Mr. Samantha? Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, before, I said in finance? Okay. No, I just wanted to, if you, well, he's gone, Councilman Ortiz.
He had a phone call, and I gave his phone in his hand when he left.
Yeah, well, I wanted to recognize him. Yeah, well, I wanted to recognize him, we just left the city council meeting and I invited him over here. He's, and I just wanted to recognize him, he was really wanting to come over here to meet one of our commissioners.
Just one?
Well, that's him down there.
Okay.
But he'll be back in a minute.
All right, thank you. Keep it long.
I mean, it's seven of us, you know?
You just want to meet one of.
Okay, cool.
Good evening. Hope everyone is doing well tonight. I'll try to go through this briefly as I can. Barrington Ferry Road, roundabout, Mr. Stevens asked for a copy of the layout, so I bought a copy of the layout. For everybody to look, I gave him a big one, and everybody else got a copy of it as well. Wells Cemetery Road, we are waiting on one more parcel, so I didn't want you to think that we're forgetting about that one. Elm Street and Windhaven, the contractor's got pipes delivered, I think you had a good conversation with him the other day. He mentioned to me that he stopped to talk to you.
I did. Hey, I learned that from Commissioner Stevens, you know, just stop and talk.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was great.
Especially since he's really close to your house, it works good.
He's right there on it.
It's about time you pay attention.
So we're trying to, he's trying to get started on his stuff.
We all learned a few things.
There you go. Water System Western Railroad.
Quick question, before we leave from that, were the letters put out?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We mailed them to everyone, and my office actually went to everybody's door.
And did the door hangers?
We did it week before last.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, I can't remember what day, but it was not, it was week before last.
Right.
Water System West Railroad, Lamar is working on the easements on that. We're going to try to, Mr. Brandon and I talked about those a little bit, we're going to try to send out another letter and try to promote that a little bit better. I think we signed those letters today, and those will be going out tomorrow, return receipt requested. The Limerick Road overlay actually looks pretty good. We're looking at the Speedhump, not Speedhump, Rumble Strip. I hadn't forgotten about that, Andy and I are kind of looking at, some of them are coming up already. Anyhow, so it may be that we just remove one of them, but we're definitely looking into that for you. But I think that's all basically done on their project.
Excuse me, you still got the RPMs on you?
Yes, sir, we've got RPMs coming. But I think that would be the last thing. So may end up having to put a little extra striping down, because the striping went down pretty early. And we kind of needed to for the amount of traffic. But generally, if you put the striping down too early, the asphalt will bleed through. So we'll probably come back over on top of it one more time. But this kind of depends on how bad it bleeds, so. Cloddy Lane Water System Contractor has the contracts, we should have those back any day to be able to get that set up to get going on that.
Good, good.
And most of the rest of the stuff is kind of moving along like it should, I won't try to read everything on that. We did receive a bridge report, the chairman forwarded to us our annual bridge report, they did semi-annual. They did a pretty good inspection of all the bridges. Most of the bridges are under state control, we have several bridges that we have to look after. Three of them require posting, two of them already are posted. And the worst one was the Lewis Frasier Road Bridge over Peacock Canal, which the department is going to be replacing for us. So we don't have to make any corrections there. So the only two that we have that will be posted anymore will be the two on K Creek Road, one over Peacock Canal and one over K Creek. And they are already appropriately posted. The details that they sent, they're already there, so we're good there.
Do we have a due date on the Lewis Frasier?
No, sure, I did not look back at what the schedule is, but I think they're about to go into right-of-way acquisition. And, you know, we've already given them our funds for the right-of-way acquisition, so that was our part of the deal, so they should be doing that, so pretty shortly. You know, I'll get a better let date within the next month and let you know.
Did you say this could be about a nine-months project to a year? That road could be shut down, so everybody will have to go all the way around?
Yes, sir. Hopefully, they'll be able to do it faster, because this is a small bridge, you know? Really depends on who the contractor is. But a lot of times, they'll be able to get it open and not have to shut it down for the whole length of their contract.
And this will be prefab?
I think they're.
Prefab would go a whole lot quicker.
Yes, sir.
I mean, it might cost more, I don't know which one, but prefab would.
It's got some precast, it does have precast, some precast components, some components are cast in place, so hopefully it'll go really fast. We do have, we did have a, I want to back up, make sure that I covered everything. Also gave everybody a copy of the, this little package that was on your desk. It has the roundabout there at Barrington Ferry Road. It has some right-of-way acquisition we need to do for Mary Todd Road on there. And then we've got a copy of some plans we had to request. Arcadia Subdivision, which is located at one ninety-six, on the cutoff point towards Savannah. They have a water system out there, which is beyond where our water system is. They are looking to do a phase three, which is thirty-something lots. And I gave you a copy of their plans for that expansion, where they are extending their water system into their subdivision. One of the things that they need is a letter from Liberty County that basically agrees to let them serve that subdivision with their water system. Now, this is not an approval of the subdivision. The subdivision will come back to you with all the drainage, the lot layout, preliminary plat, the whole process. One of the things that they've got to do before really ever comes to you is they've got to get through some permit processes. One of those is the water system permit. The EPD needs the letter from the county saying that we're not going to serve this particular subdivision to permit it using their water system. One of the things that they are doing is they are building this expansion of the water system to Liberty County standards. Actually, they are using Liberty County standard details for all their water system installation. So that if something ever does happen in the future, this new section will definitely be built to Liberty County standard. But what they're requesting is that the Liberty County issue a letter saying that we do not plan to extend or serve water to this subdivision at this time. Now, it is just outside of our current service delivery area. So it's not part of what we're showing in our service delivery area, but they're close enough, you know, during the permit process, it really doesn't matter how close you are. If you're close to a municipal system, the state wants a letter saying that you are in agreement with them installing their water system and not extending yours out to it. So they're asking to allow them to use their own water system into their subdivision and the county write a letter saying they do not plan to extend it this time. So that's kind of what we need is commissioners to say, okay, let's do this, or, you know, try to be able to allow them to move forward with it. Now, I do know they got issues and things that they've got to take care of as far as the preliminary plat, roads, drainage and all that. That comes back to you at a different date. I kind of washed that up a little bit.
Yeah, you pretty much got it soapy.
Basically, what they need is they need the county to say, okay, we'll give you a letter saying that we're not going to extend the water system to it. And I need you guys to say, yes, sir, we'll agree to let Mr. Brown sign the letter saying we're not going to extend the water system out there.
My thought, I was thinking, how is it gauged where that private water systems fit into the amount of water the EPD allows us to withdraw? How does that fit into that piece?
Well, they fall under the same rules that we do, as far as groundwater withdrawal and the amount that they're allowed to withdraw out of the Floridian aquifer. So EPD kind of controls how much is coming out of the aquifer. And that doesn't count against us and what we're able to withdraw out of the water. They've got some capacity that's remaining in their system, and they're trying to utilize the capacity that's remaining in their system.
Remember, then the subdivision that's slated for Isle of Wight Road, private water system, are they tied into?
City.
Isle of Wight Road, Arland, the one that Claude is working on, it's Midway.
It's Midway.
Yes, sir.
All right, the one that we're going to do off of, in Commissioner Walden's district, that's between here and the high school, have I got it right?
Flemington Forest is going to be Liberty County.
Yeah, we're going to provide water for them, okay.
And also the one off of Bill Carter.
And Bill Carter. Yes, sir, they're, the one off of Bill Carter Road is called Cottages on Carter. I believe that's the name of it. They've already made supplemental to the LCPC with their preliminary plat and their plans. We've done, gone through the plan review for Cottages on Carter, and they've kind of met all our requirements for our redways and water system. The only thing they need to add to their plans is where their mail kiosk is going to be. So you should be seeing that, they're going to LCPC, probably go to LCPC in March, and you guys probably should see it the first week in April. Now, we did a letter some time ago for that particular subdivision saying that we would provide water to them.
Right, we did.
And they are tying on to our water system and doing that.
So cottages at Bill?
Cottages on Carter.
I mean, why didn't he just call it Bill's Cottages?
Trent, Chairman and Mr. Brown, if we do this letter, say that we're not going to service them with water. But I'm thinking of our plans, we're looking at a county-wide water system. If we say no to them now, then we see that we can push water that way. What is that going to do to that letter?
So you have a couple of different options. That's one reason that we go ahead and build to county standards now. So if it becomes, comes to a point where we want to extend our water system out that way, and we want to take over the water system that's in that area, we have the ability to talk to the owner of the water system and make an agreement to take over the water system. Or, you know, that gives us plenty of options. So that's one of the things we want to make sure that if we inherit it by some happenstance, that it's built to county standard.
Which means they will be installing water meters?
Installing water meters, they'll be installing the same, the water lines, the size that we require.
By hydrants.
By our hydrants, yes, sir. Four nine yards. Think if you look back on the last page of the plans that I gave you, they use our Liberty County water system standards and details.
Y'all got to help me out, being in the yellow zone, who's the gatekeeper on withdrawal? Who says?
EPD.
EPD is, so they will come knocking on our doors in Hay Liberty County? You've reached your, will they say you've reached your limit, you're nearing your limit, or?
Well, so I've had this happen on permits in the past, where, you know, you try to do a little extension to pick up four or five lots, and all of a sudden, you've reached your capacity, and basically EPD says, no, you're disapproved, because you don't have the capacity, or you've either reached your groundwater withdrawal permit, or you've reached your number of customers that you can have. We ran into this situation in Waltourville, several years ago, when they had just gotten some of their myosine wells, and they were overpumping the upper Floridian and underpumping the myosine. And, you know, the development had to wait about six months so that EPD in Waltourville could get their operations right. So EPD's a pretty good gatekeeper on that, they keep a good eye on it.
So does this need to be considered a factor when we start working on the comprehensive plan about future growth into the rural areas of Liberty County to include the water capacity?
Yes, sir.
Because I heard someone say that without water in the sewer, we're going to be.
We're struggling.
Yeah.
And we're struggling on that now.
Yeah.
Especially on the east end.
Yeah.
We have about a three to one need, three times the need for what we got.
I just want somebody to give me the sign that says, bad curve ahead or something, so I know don't run off the road.
Yes, sir, I know, it's always kind of, do we say yes, do we say no? In this case, you know, it's outside our service delivery area, it's well over four thousand feet to extend to them. They have their own water system already. I don't, I don't see us shooting ourselves in the foot, they're building it to our standard. So, and, you know.
Mr. Chairman and Trent, you're talking about our standards. That covers a big ball of wax here, because when the gentleman was going to build in the McIntosh Lake area, you know, that was one of the things about the sewer and the water. Who was going to put the infrastructure in so it'd be there later on? Because we didn't have any sewer, and we don't have any water in there. Now, you know, I know you can't just police all of these things, but that's going to be a pretty big job for you to make sure that those valves and those underground structures are to the standard that we would require. Are you prepared to do all of that?
I am, already have staff that we do it already.
But these are, how many new subdivisions are we looking at? You're looking at the one in McIntosh, you're looking at Mr. Ray's subdivision, and you're not even talking about the one probably in the Isle of Wight, but there's a good possibility you'll be looking at that.
We've already been looking at that one.
Commissioner Stevens was talking about. I mean, I'm all for the growth, east, west, north and south, but, you know, I just want to make sure that once you cover it up with dirt, it's got to make sure that we're to the standards that it's going to last us for a long time. And then again, are we doing something now that we didn't do for another builder? Or is there somebody that's out there that we said, we can't do this? And I don't want that to happen, I don't want us to have already made a decision on something that we haven't, we haven't been fair about.
And I agree with you, so, and I'm trying to remember back, so help me if I remember back. Since we've had our water system, most everybody that's been in the general vicinity have wanted to work to extend the water system into their neighborhoods, and most of them weren't that far away. And so they're extending the water system within their systems to make it work. And I'm trying to think of anybody that's built a subdivision with water that required a, for lack of a better term, will-not-serve letter from the municipality. City of Hinesville, Midway, the cities are used to doing those. As a matter of fact, back in two thousand and six, two thousand and seven timeframe, when they built Habersham, they had to get a will-not-serve letter from the city of Midway, just because it was closer. And so thinking of the subdivisions in our area that have gone on, this is the first one that's been out there that we haven't had, that we've had to do this.
Well, this, you know, I understand the municipalities that are out there, but in Commissioner Thrift's district, Commissioner Stevens' district, and a lot of the unincorporated areas, if you have ten or twelve homes that's out there, is this going to stop them folks from getting the service that the other folks have already got because we've kind of fudged a little bit and helped them? I just want to make sure that, you know, those areas that's out there that don't have water right now, when it's time for them, we've got to make sure that we're. I just wanna make sure that, you know, those areas that's out there that don't have water right now, when it's time for them, we gotta make sure that we're treating them all fair.
I agree.
That's all I, all I'm saying, I mean, I don't, I'm, I'm not against the growth, I'm not against the builder, developer or whatever, even the guy that's putting it in the ground. I just wanna, you know, I can see a lot of times where you, you, you know, you loaded your car up and then there's nowhere else to go. So, uh, and that, that's what I was, you know, talking to you about. It's gonna be a lot out here and I just wanna make sure, um, that it's looked at pretty thorough.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I got water, but the subdivision here in McIntosh Lake, they don't have water. And, you know, even that area that we talked about in Isle of Wight, it's gonna be served by this, the, uh, city of, uh, Midway. So, um, whether it's coming from the Floridian aquifer or the South Carolina or whatever, don't make no difference. Because when you don't have no water or no access to it, that's when it's gonna make a difference. That's all I got to say. That's a mouthful, but I just, you know, there's nothing like having clean drinking water.
One of the things I probably need to get to you guys, just kinda at some point in the near future is, uh, we've been working on a countywide water plan focused mostly right now on the east end with some of the projects that are coming out on that side. Um, that way you kinda see what the needs are out there and kinda how some of the plans are and what the planning is being done to try to serve that. And actually that could benefit Liberty County Board of Commissioners in the long run as well. But I, I'm, I'll try to get you a draft copy of where we are on that.
But you told us last month and the month before that, that our withdrawal is nearly none. I mean, right now we are in a pickle because we don't have, we can't withdraw like we think we potentially will do in the next ten years.
Yes.
I mean, so if we, if we're not able to withdraw from it, Trent, is what I'm saying, we got to kinda look ahead of the game and not just all of a sudden decide, okay, we're gonna go ahead and serve these people. Um, I know the deal with trying to work with Long County and things like that. But let's, um, let's make sure that we look out for number one and let's not forget what our number is.
I got it, I do, I do understand.
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, uh, I, I agree with Commissioner Walden. Uh, especially, I, I guess in the last month or so, we've been talking about, a lot more about water. Uh, and I know I've mentioned, and I, one thing is I know the Water Resource Council, the technical side meets. But our side, I remember we kinda stopped meeting because of, and as needed, I guess per se. I think it's probably about that time as is needed again for us to reactivate the Water Resource Council so we can stay on.
Yes, sir.
On board.
I agree, that way we can at least give everybody an update of where the technical committee is on some of these.
Right, right.
That way everybody knows. I agree a hundred percent.
Yeah, so that, that's just my, my request, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir.
No problem.
If you plan to maybe, um, next month?
I'd be glad to do that. I can do that. We have a, a committee meeting.
Sometime.
Next week.
Yeah.
Soon, where we're gonna kinda hit it for another couple hours, try to resolve some things. And then that way it'll be a nice, better, it'll be a better product for you to look at.
Thank you, sir. Oh, is, is that a yes or no about our side? Or we're just on?
Well, yeah, you, so you got the technical committee and then the rest, the policy committee.
Policy committee.
I made a note just to get with Jeff, and we can get together, schedule a meeting of the policy committee.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah.
And then you're asking me to bring a little bit of information back to you next month?
Yes, sir. Cuz you know, um, when I, when I happened to observe with the governmental meeting, that seems to be a common occurrence that, uh, everybody's not fully aware. You know, we may have our private conversations and I know that you all are meeting behind the scenes, I know that, to talk about water. But then let's bring it to the public so they can at least know where we are.
Know where we are.
Yeah. And see, that's the thing, with, with, with the policy committee, we had people from other municipalities that were at the table. So I think that's where the confusion is at right now.
Otherwise sometime it appears, appears we're doing nothing when you really are.
But they just don't have the latest information. The information isn't being put out now because we don't meet, so if.
No, it'd be great to go ahead and have another policy committee.
There we go, thank you.
Okay, so back to Arcadia, do we wanna go ahead and?
You wanna do that? Mr. Long is asking for a, a, a letter of approval from this commission that we would allow the private water provider to provide water? Expanding to the Arcadia.
Phase three.
Yeah.
That's it, is it?
Say that again then, Trent.
But the water service provider that serves water to the Arcadia subdivision, provide water to the proposed Arcadia phase three.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion on what Trent, Trent Long said.
You didn't hear? What's he gonna say, gonna what Trent Long said?
I'll second what Commissioner second made a motion on.
Any further discussion, all in favor?
Thank you, I'm sorry I made it soupy, but it's telling my mind's going faster than my mouth.
I just, um, I mean, it's something that I was curious about. I was talking to Commissioner Gillard, how many water towers there are in Heinzville? Over probably twelve mile, square miles and there's a lot of place, there's a lot of square, twelve square mile blocks. And on the other end that we, that is gonna be concerning. Some of it is gonna have industrial and commercial area. And, uh, I mean, we know that there's places in there, Trent, that paper company land, that one day somebody's gonna decide they don't wanna grow trees on it. And they're gonna need clean drinking water.
Yes, sir, I understand a hundred percent what you're saying, sir.
And I plan on being around.
I plan on being around too.
Yeah, I just wanna be a check on you.
All right, you didn't mean anything else for me?
We're done, sir, thank you for that. You report back to us in March, we appreciate it.
Mr. Chair.
And we're gonna try to do that continuously, commissioners, uh, other things that are going on that need to be brought to the forefront, at least brought to the public's forefront. So they'll know, uh, what's going on, uh, when we have our conversation, when we had our subcommittee meeting and just bring it back to report out. Yes, sir, Commissioner Gillard.
Yes, I just wanna mention that Commissioner Fraser, um, the Palm Drive splash sign. That, that project gets finished and you get ready, you get ready to do something round on Elm Street.
Right, right.
Guess we could, you want me to help you move it on around the corner?
I, I appreciate you, Commissioner Gillard.
We'll do it.
You're the man, thank you.
Mr. Dodd, uh, Liberty County Board of Education MOA. Councilman Dodd.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, um, first thing I'd like to talk about is a memorandum of agreement with the Board of Education. Uh, that, that, the current one we have runs for two years and I'd like to just extend it for two years. Um, that allows us in case of emergency, we have to evacuate, we use their school buses. And then if something really gets bad and we have to use some of these schools for our critical workforce or a tornado or something like that, we got that. Um, the Board of Education did approve on Tuesday, so they're good with keeping the same contract. The verbiage is the same and we just keep it for two years in case, you know, change outs and, and like that.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for approval.
Second. Second, we approve the MOA with Liberty County Board of Education. Thank you, Mr. Dodd, Councilman Dodd for presenting, any further discussion? All in favor, show your hands, please. All right, it's done, my friend.
Keep going.
Keep going.
Keep going.
All right, sir.
So we did a, a RFP in December of twenty nine for a debris removal contract. Uh, we had five, it closed on January thirty first and we had five vendors bid it on it. And myself, Mr. Mosley and, um, Trip, we, we was on a committee, we went through the, the proposals. And, um, we wanna keep, uh, Crowder Golf that, based off of their proposals for three years with a, a possibility of a two-year extension. Um, pretty good, um, we've had Crowder Golf for a while and they was our, uh, the last time we used that contract was twenty sixteen with Hurricane Matthew. And we was pretty satisfied with them, um, due to some, um, environmental conditions. The best part, we won't be doing no burning, it'll be more chipping, that's the preferred method going forward now. So, um, based off the committee, we would recommend Crowder Golf.
You, you, you brought a question to my, when we did the burning, we did Airport Road?
Airport, Airport and, um.
And Tray Po West.
Tray, Tray Po West.
So you're not recommending that again?
No, and, um, Crowder Golf, they got a, a chipping and that's their preferred method to the chipping. And seventy-five percent of the clean chips go to, uh.
Keep living beautiful.
Yeah, like biofuel, uh, so, so they reuse it.
Okay. Well, so, that's complaints about smoke. All right, Chair, maintain the motion then.
Chair, make a motion that we maintain the contract with Crowder Golf.
I second that. Second and the third from Commissioner Walden for need one, any further discussion? All in favor, show your hands, please, since the cut is, then as well, we hope we don't have to use.
Yeah, absolutely. Sir, uh, the last, last thing I have is a statewide mutual agreement. So we do those, uh, every four years and ours runs out in March, March the first. And we're just trying to get that renewed. Uh, verbiage is the same and that allows us to get the resources. If a disaster does happen, allows us to get, uh, the resources with the state where we can use it at, uh, the Emergency Operations Center.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for approval of the statewide mutual aid agreement.
Second.
Motion, second, we approve the statewide mutual aid agreement as been proposed by Mr. Dodd. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor, show your hands, please. Motion passes, thank you, sir.
Thank you, all have a good evening.
Any word of warning for the weather, we, weather, beautiful day today.
Go and get some rain on Saturday.
Get your umbrellas out, huh? Thank you, Mr. Dodd, congratulations to you too, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right. Mr. Carter, Mr. Pierce is here.
Y'all love to see me come.
We do. As long as we can see you.
I was about to say. That's what I say, I knew y'all love to see me come.
As long as I can see you.
First of all, thank you, Mr. Chairman and all the commissioners, uh, good evening. And I wanna first start out by thanking you all for the job that you always do. Um, along, along with Mr. Brown and Mr. Mosley. Um, I'm putting my dibs in for my budget coming up this year, but, um, but I wanna thank y'all for what y'all do. And thank y'all for the, having me to, David change over and have the, uh, other full-time deputy coroner from part-time to full-time. Um, just to let y'all know, I didn't hire the full-time until December. Um, so it's kinda like a halfway, halfway point of, of, of that budget. So, didn't wanna put it on there all at one time, so we, we decided to do it in December. So she came morning in December, but she's back, now I'm standing, she's back and now she's full, she's back there. Wave your hand to him, you ain't on Facebook a lot. So just, just to give an overview of what, um, for the coroner's office for last year, um, I do have some good news. Um, I know how they say the coroner will have good news, but we do have some good news. Um, the death rate, uh, death toll for the coroner's office last year was down. Um, we had a hundred and sixteen natural deaths. Uh, we only had five homicides. We had eight suicides, twenty-six accidents, and now we still have eleven pending cases. So we had a total of a hundred and sixty-six cases for two thousand twenty-three. Um, COVID nineteen cases, uh, two cases, uh, Fort Stewart cases, eight. Um, children, male, three, uh, females, five. So that's all total of one sixty-six we had last year. So it's kinda broken down, the numbers broken down here.
When you say pending cases?
Pending cases are cases that we've already signed out as far as pending calls are there. But we're waiting on the medical examiner to give us the final official calls of that.
What's that turnaround time now, is it much better than?
It's probably about, give or take, three to six months.
Oh, okay.
And if we have to take a case to Atlanta, which we've had to take, some of our babies are having to go to Atlanta.
Really?
Because the forensic.
Because they specialize in?
Yes, the forensic pathologist for babies is, is in Atlanta.
Okay.
So, um, so sometime we go there.
Talking about building a, another facility in, in our?
Yes, sir, we have a brand new facility, we had built one in Pula.
In Pula.
Um, but they have an shortage of medical examiners.
Give you a building, you don't have to help.
Well, and they just recently, they recently, uh, Macon Lab has recently been, uh, under construction, so they've, they've actually closed the Macon Lab. So all cases now going to Savannah or either going to headquarters. So the, the response, delayed time and all has been delayed now with cases. So, um, some of our cases go within five days, um, some taking longer than that to go to headquarters. So it just depends and all the, all counties are using that same.
Wow.
Yeah.
So will the Macon Center reopen, will it?
Yes, their plans are to reopen, um, they do have a medic, medical examiner's gonna be there. Um, so their plans are to reopen. Um, the forensic pathologist, she traveled, children, she travels here in Savannah a certain time and she's in Atlanta a certain time. So it just depends on the timeframe. Um, me personally, I, I prefer not to go to Atlanta, um, just because of transportation. I mean, you're looking at a thousand dollars to go to Atlanta and come back. And then sometime they don't do it the same day and you gotta send transport back another day. So we try to keep it where we can try to hope and pray that she's gonna be in the lab in Savannah.
How do you budget for that when it's kinda happenstance, okay, how do you budget for that?
Well, we just, we just keep going and, um, whatever happened, I try to find a transport service that I use that would be more reasonable.
Okay.
Uh, mileage wise, um, don't always happen that way, but sometime we make it to mileage wise. And we base it upon who's gonna be more reasonable to go up. We try to get a schedule where it can go up the same day, that morning and the autopsy's in the same day and bring, come back the same day. It doesn't always work that way.
How many companies do you have to work with doing that?
We've got, uh, three.
Three, okay.
Yeah, we got three. And talking to another one out of Augusta, uh, which is more reasonable, he does look, uh, transports, um, for the whole state. So I have another company that he's, he's interested in probably going from, um, coming here, then going there, he's looking more reasonable. Unfortunately, he's a little more reasonable, so. His mileage is about two dollars and twenty-five cent load a mile. So, he's pretty reasonable. Um, now, I don't know how long he lasts doing that at two dollars twenty-five cent, but, you know. Most companies are charging three dollars, almost three dollars load a mile. And that should go to Atlanta. So, um, we try to, we try to, as always, I always say, we try to, we try to do things and, and work along in the budget as much as we can. Um, I will say so far this year, um, that our cases right now, we're at twenty-seven cases already this year. And we're just in, in, in February.
I'm sorry, you said twenty-eight?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven?
Yeah, we're twenty-seven, so far we got fourteen natural, we got fourteen natural deaths. And this was done last week, a week before last, so we got fourteen natural deaths and we've got ten pending. Um, and then we've got no COVID cases, zero COVID cases, um, of deaths. And then we got one case on Fort Stewart and we got one child death, which was one, a male. And then we've had some more cases since then, since this was printed out. So we read about twenty-seven cases already this year.
And that's a mixture of?
Yes, most, most of our cases are natural deaths, most of them are natural. Um, a lot of hospice companies are coming in now and a lot of residents are going up on the hospice care. Um, and we still get called a lot if there is, um, if hospice can't get there, they'll call us out. We work with, um, Your Family Hospice real well. So if they got any, if their nurse can't get out, they call us, we'll go out and pronounce, um, and then we do the paperwork for them. Got things worked out with Fort Stewart. Fort Stewart is now, they do, they doing all their civilian, I mean, they're doing all the active duty soldiers and we're doing most of all the civilians. So we got a good rotation with that going on.
Where did it take to work that out, I remember the discussion?
Could not the middleman, I think. Um, we were, we were, um, how do I say this in a good way? We were in, we were in an MOA agreement. We was in an MOA agreement with, um, with, I don't know how to say, um, with the Armed Forces Medical Examiner's Office. Myself and their higher, we spoke, um, and we cut the middle people out. So what we do is we confirm each case on Fort Stewart and then they determine, we determine which case is gonna be taken. So most cases we agreed upon, they were handling all soldiers on Fort Stewart. That happened on Fort Stewart. And then we were handling most of the civilians, they don't have anything to do with civilians. They say, but we want all the soldiers. Um, but they did say that you do have ultimate jurisdiction. So between us and Armed Forces Medical Examiner, we agreed that, that was what we was gonna do.
So if a soldier loses his life off base, they handling that too?
No, sir, that's ours.
That's yours.
Yes.
They're just doing them.
Yes, sir, anything outside of the gated area of Garrison. So if it's on one nineteen, one forty-four, um, then we have the option of giving it back to Fort Stewart, if it's a soldier. And most time we try to give it back to Fort Stewart. Unless Georgia State Patrol or they're involved and then it becomes a county case then. But if it's, if it's MPs involved and we can figure out a way to the Armed Forces Medical Examiner, we confirm and they will take it, we let them handle it.
So, uh, Mr. Chair, I just have a question for you. Uh, so, and, and I appreciate all your hard work and dedication to, to get everything fixed with Fort Stewart. Cuz I, I know that, you know, we've, you've worked hard for that, so we appreciate it. But I guess the only question I still have with that is, uh, so are they still holding back information?
are they still holding back information on, on the deaths from?
No.
So even if, if it's a soldier on Fort Stewart, you're still privy to that information?
Yes, sir. We do have, we do have a, there's a point of contact at Fort Stewart. And CID has been real well, works real well. They notify us and let us know there's death on post. And then from that standpoint, if we need any information, the casualty affairs officer, patient affairs officer on Fort Stewart, we can get that information to them. Even with behavioral records now.
And see, I guess, right, and that's wonderful because, you know, the biggest thing, I know even from the local level and also the state, you know, we're really pushing about mental health. So, you know, as long as we have the stats to kind of back it up, that'd, you know, help us on, on the state level.
Mostly now, most of the soldiers, if they're off post, if there's any kind of behavioral issues or whatever, we able to get a copy. So we would know exactly what's going on as far as if, like for example, most suicides off post. You know, if there's any kind of behavioral health, then we would get a point, got a point of contact, we'd get the information to let us know.
Because I'm assuming we're going to need that, you know, especially, you know, being on the board of managers. I know from ACCG standpoint, we're really advocating hard with the state. But more importantly, I just don't want them to, you know, sometimes with the state, they give us unfunded mandates. And, you know, the more numbers that we have to back up the data, I think that, that'll help tremendously, so I appreciate that.
We do have one, we do have one, one of these pending cases, a case that we do, we do have from the good old nursing home in Midway.
Oh, yeah.
And I guess me and Commissioner Stevens talked it up one morning, breakfast one morning, we was talking. But anyway, we got, we do have one pending case now at the nursing home, which is awarded to state that has, quote unquote, it's in no family, but that's to be determined still. But that case is still pending, so we do have that still in our possession, the coroner's office. We're working on that now.
And we have, we still have your request on file.
Appreciate it.
There was some discussion about that yesterday, so just know that we're, we're on it.
Well, I know there, I think it was some discussion, but I want to make it, you know, kind of, you know what I'm saying? I appreciate all, like, you know, everything, like discussion was and all, but if all possible, I wouldn't want the building connected to the other building. So if, whatever y'all decide on, I would like to have it separate. And reason being is because of the interest in exiting, coming in, coming out and all that. It just needs to be kind of secluded just for us to be able to. Because if we're not there, anybody might can go in at any time and.
But on the.
Being in the area is fine, but I mean, just, but just a separate. Yeah, if you don't, if you're, if it's all right, does that sound pretty good, Mr. Ward?
Sir?
I said, sound pretty good, Mr. Ward, you know, because, you know.
I was.
I just could, separate, separate is more of a, how do I say? You don't want to tie it all together. I mean, we are a separate entity. And so, you know, as far as being on that, on that land is good, it's perfect, but I just, as far as separating, I mean, we can be, you know, that's perfect.
All right. You help us with the next round of spots, will we help you with what you need?
Well, we can always do what we can do, I can tell you that. I think everybody know, I try my best to be as good a steward as taxpayer dollars I can, because, you know, I mean, that's where it is. But I will say this though, I do need another vehicle.
So you were doing so well. That's the tallest I've seen.
Give us six miles.
He leaned back, he leaned back there.
Reggie, if the deaths continue, I believe we're going to get your station wagon. On a serious note, you mentioned the, the work on Fort Stewart and in Liberty County, but, I mean, how do you differentiate when it's somebody on the highway out there that's in Long Liberty, you know, you.
Long County.
You've got Tappan, part of it. I mean, do you have to make that decision?
Well, sometime.
I don't know how you can.
It, it, it depends on what tower it comes off of. So sometime it'd bounce off of Tappan Quay Tower or Long County Tower. Then you got Bryan County, which is up a little bit. So it depends on how close to the line they are. And then it bounced off that tower, then notify that nine-one-one center and all that corner. Once they get there, they realize it's not their jurisdiction, then they will call, they call us. But most of the times, it's, with that area there, most of the time, if GSP is, they usually work the accident zone, if it's off post, one forty-four, one nineteen. And normally, they kind of like know who's has the jurisdiction and then notify that coroner's office.
So if they're, let's just say they're at Red Cloud Range and it's, who handles that? You, I mean, is the government, they have to make that decision or?
Yes, it, it depends on where, it depends on, say, for example, if we had a plane crash and it crashed over into, I mean, I couldn't tell you where it was at, but it was way over. So we had to, actually had to pinpoint by the coroner's on where they were located at and everything by the time they, you know, when they found everything. But then they realized it was Liberty County, so they called us. And at that time, they were, they were, it was a civilian plane. So we had, we had to handle all four deaths. And so that was a, that was a, I opened experience with me because I just became coroner. But they generally, they figured out the area, what they'd be at and it's copied out, hey, this is going to be Liberty County.
Well, and the reason I was asking that, and Joey had mentioned space. I mean, space right now, you know, you're looking at what we've got here and that's going, that's going to play into the decision, you know, what happens in the future. And I was just wanting to make sure that there's some type of dialogue with those folks on Fort Stewart when we get ready to expand that they may have some brick and mortar money.
Yes. Definitely understand where you're coming from. They probably got somebody there too.
Yeah, well, it sounds to me like lately, they've been blowing it all up.
They got the train.
Anyhow.
Yeah.
Just so you know, thank you, sir. Two things come to mind, number one, I'm glad you're presenting. I thank you, Commissioner Stevens, because the folk are watching on Facebook. We get asked the question many times, what are my tax money doing? This is a good example that though, this is one area that your tax money has to operate the coroner's office for all that he does, that none of us certainly want to do, you know. But it's a job that has to be done, so it's a service of the county. Sometime you may not, you know, because it's not you or your loved one, you have no respect for it, but we have a respect when you present it very well for what you do, you and your staff do. So we appreciate that.
I have to thank them because they look at, they keep me, keep me halfway straight. You know, man, I don't know what.
Especially that one on the end.
Yeah, I, I would say that I don't know what I would do without them when my wife passed away, because they, they basically just took over and just ran the office and took over, so.
And I know there was some, some discussion, I think it's called DCIP, it's acronym that the military has, where you can do some civilian slash community partnerships kind of thing. I'm not sure where this would fall, but I just need to let you all know, when it comes to the military budget, Fort Stewart already has prioritized its budget or items. His office is not one of them.
Not one of them, no.
They have some major things they're working with, they're trying to get funded and have been trying for years, am I right, Mr. Brown? To get funded and it just does not move quickly. So just know, this is probably going to be, not a problem, it's going to be a Liberty County spots funded, spots assisted project when this does happen. Because if you wait for dollars from Fort Stewart to help us, we'll be waiting for a long time.
But you know, Mr. Chairman, I think if we go ahead and open our mouth to them now, by the time we get ready, it might be on the table.
Well, I know we do have, we do have their, their plan, they, they contact me when they have a disaster something coming, they contact us. And they will ask us as far as how much space we can, we can handle in Liberty County. And I always tell them, you know, we got six spaces at the hospital. Then I've got six space at the funeral, in the cooler funeral. So we got a total of twelve we can actually hold out, so. They got a lot of resources they can bring in, in fact, a whole lot of fashion that we can't. And so if I ask them how much y'all can house me out there, they tell me, well, I don't know, we have to get back with you, you know. But they got the resource to have, to house theirs, but.
But they're also stipulations. I remember that from working at the hospital, there's certain things we were not allowed to do, certain things we were allowed to do, other things we were not allowed to do. And sometimes we, we, we found creative ways to do things, you know.
And if it's a terrorist threat or terrorist anything, that post is going to lock down and there's nothing they can do. We're going to be just basically outside the gate, having to try to take y'all.
But we keep working, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Any other question, then?
Appreciate you.
All right, okay, all right.
Good to see you.
I mean, not promise, but we're going to work, try to work on that vehicle.
I think Tammy's going to ride in, you know what I'm saying, because she, you know, she's. I mean, I think I mentioned, well, I had mentioned Mr. Brown too in the email and the email about a loaner vehicle, but Mr. Brown told me he wasn't having a loaner vehicle, so. So I was trying to see what, you know.
One thing, Chair, I can say this, we don't want to be in a situation like we were about a year ago, you know.
Okay, okay, you got it.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Leah, CBB?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, and I actually had the pleasure of chatting with Commissioner Stevens and Mr. Pierce at breakfast the other morning. Because I happened to be in the same spot.
That must have been some good conversation.
Angie's diner. Okay, so our bi-annual update, this first slide shows you the food truck festival from October of last year. So we had about seventeen thousand people that were out at the food truck festival, takes place here in downtown Heinsville. Lots and lots of folks, thirty-two food trucks. And we did have a shortened area due to early voting, so if we could have fully expanded, we would have had fifty trucks. So that would be our hope for this year. We've lots of luncheons, one that the CBB actually hosts, which is that bottom left-hand corner photo. That is our state person, our regional person, Sarah Ann, and she is actually on maternity leave right now, but she was able to come down for that luncheon and be one of the speakers on the panel, really explaining to folks what it is that a CBB does. Ribbon cuttings, lots of ribbon cuttings taking place, lots and lots and lots of ribbon cuttings. Just from a chamber side, we have had twenty-one new members since January first. So versus the death toll, mine's a happy numbers. So lots of new businesses opening in our community. Spouse tours, we continue to do those every other month. So our next one is actually next week, it is full. We will be visiting Dorchester Academy and a couple other places out on the east end and then coming back this way to actually do some floral arranging with Florabelle's, it's in the old Stacy's building. So some interesting things going on. And then we're doing a senior spouse tour the week following for the senior command staff spouses. So that one should be pretty cool as well. And then April would be our next one. So every other month, we do skip those super duper hot June and July months because nobody wants to spend them with us. Lots of conferences and meetings since we were before you last. We did represent Liberty County at the Georgia Downtown Conference, which are the left-hand photos there. You can see Take a Walk in Liberty County, that's Cade Creek. That's a newly, I guess, appointed judge, Michael McGirt, that's actually walking on the boardwalk in Cade Creek. And then we did a lot of other conferences and meetings. We did a local photographer tour last fall, so a lot of amateur and professional photographers that we led around for the day, places that they could take pictures. A lot of places that folks didn't know about, especially our dirt roads, seemed to fascinate a lot of people, which is a good thing, because if you grew up on one, you love them. Until you have to drive on them in the rain, but they are pretty and the photographers really liked them. Lots of other publicity, radio shows. We went to Washington DC, you see the chairman there and lots of other stuff. We ship welcome packets and rack cards all over, that's that bottom left-hand photo. That's a young lady from our office that was over at Liberty Shipping mailing a box of rack cards. So we mail a lot of those. We have ads right now in Good Housekeeping and Woman's Day, various editions of that since October. Welcome bags and promotional products, we pack about four thousand welcome bags a year, so lots of opportunities to get information about Liberty County out. Whether that's here for folks that are visiting or for folks who request them from somewhere else, we mail it to them. We participated in the Christian Churches Together event in Riceboro, which to me was super impactful. There was a hundred plus clergy from all over the country, from all different denominations, who had the, I find the Historic Baptismal Trail a very spiritual place and they got to make that walk and walk the boardwalk and see that history. We had our Santa mailbox at the Bacon Fraser House, always a good time, two hundred and fifty plus Santa postcards sent back to all the littles who love to hear from Santa. Heinsville for the holidays, another successful event took place here in downtown Heinsville. Chairman over there on the right-hand side, top right. I know, you were cheering.
Listen.
You were happy.
Oh, yeah, he's definitely excited at the bottom.
Gorgeous, everything turned out great. We also participated in Thirty Five Nights of Lights in Gap Park, which is the little park between the old Labor Department building and the new one now. So that was a joint effort between us, the HDA and several downtown businesses, where we decorated that little park and made it more friendly for the holidays. There was opportunity for kids to write their Christmas wishes. There was three or four different photo ops for families and I was amazed at how many people took advantage of it. And you can see that bottom right-hand picture, all of those are signatures or people who wrote what their Christmas wishes were. And I went back and painted over it at least once or twice. So lots of people using that little park. We also produced Liberty County's first travel guide. Emma actually had to leave to go back over to the Arts Council, but this was her baby. She pushed to have this done. We, to date, have given out forty-five hundred of these travel guides, so I gave you one to date. It's the little small book that consolidates some of our information. So we're not giving those out locally a lot, they're being shipped to visitor centers all over the state of Georgia and actually some in Florida as well, the Florida Georgia Line. We did an in-center activation at the Georgia Visitor Center at Port Wentworth. A couple weekends ago, we spent our Saturday up there and you can see all the folks we talked to, so many people. I never realized how many people stop at a visitor center. They said a million and a half a year and I thought they were not telling the whole truth, but they were. Because we literally talked to at least a hundred and fifty people in six hours. I mean, it was amazing, if not more than that. And those are folks we talked to, not folks we just gave stuff to. So, yeah, my thirty-second spiel is real good about Liberty County, I can say it really fast. We also started participating in Operation Startup, the newcomers event at Fort Stewart. That started again, first time since COVID that they have had that. So that's where they cycle the soldiers through who are in processing. So they do a married soldier hour and then they do a single soldier hour and we stay for both of those. We've done two of them. Today, we talked to a hundred and seventy soldiers and their families. And then next week, we'll talk to two twenty is what they told us they'll have in processing. The first week, we talked to ninety-eight. So those are folks, again, we're actually speaking to them, we're giving them goodies about Liberty County, we're able to give them rack cards and maps and get their email addresses and cell phone numbers that they'll give them to us to keep them updated about what's going on.
You remind me today, the Lopez young man that's the student of the Star Student? His parents said they were here in the military and they decided to make it their home. He said, we love it here.
One soldier that I talked to today, he and his wife got here from Alaska, they bought a house here before they got here, so sight unseen. Just because they fell in love with the area with what they saw online. And he wanted his wife to come on the spouse tour because he said in Alaska, she was very homebound, that she wasn't able to do a lot of things. So she's excited to get involved in the community. So we're, we're excited to have those folks. We talked to a lot of ladies about coming on the spouse tours. So we're looking forward to getting them involved. Some of our accolades, that bi-annual food truck festival won Best of Liberty with the Coastal Courier. Desiree was selected to be a participant in Leadership Southeast Georgia. I flipped a lot of pancakes to make money for the Boys and Girls Club on a Saturday. Third Infantry Division Day at the Capitol happened in Atlanta. Our twenty twenty-four Liberty County Magazine was published and I gave you a copy of that, that has Mr. Joe Ford on the cover. And our young adult Liberty leaders and our leadership Liberty classes began. Upcoming, we have the Small World Festival here in downtown Heinsville on March the ninth and the Food Truck Festival on March the twenty-third. And any questions, I'm happy to try to answer. Yes, sir.
March ninth, right around the corner.
Yes, sir.
Just a question, I know you probably don't have an answer, remember the other day when I saw you? Your food truck and the parade and with the changes coming downtown Heinsville, how's that going? Do, do you have a clue how that's going to affect anything?
I think I'm going to learn a lot on March the ninth about how that's going to work. I actually haven't gone down yet to measure it with a wheel, but my current plan for events would be to put more of our arts and crafts vendors down Main Street in those areas with the islands, because I don't have to get them turned around. Where a food truck, I have, I would have to get them pulled in right the first time and that very rarely happens. Because a lot of times, they don't know what side they're going to serve on until that day. So those food trucks instead will have to go in the Bridwell Park area or further down Main Street or further down MLK. That is my current plan. We're going to see how that works with a little bit smaller event, even though we had about seven thousand people for Small World last year, we had seventeen thousand for food truck. So I'm hoping I get it right the first time and make any tweaks for food truck then. For parades, I am not sure yet how that's going to work, I think it's going to be rather interesting. I think the band. I think the bands we talked about, those could split around those islands, but, um, floats, I don't have, I have no clue right now, sir.
Okay.
Yeah.
Floats are generally not much, cause trucks pull them generally, so you're talking about, they can make that, uh, I mean, they can't.
Get on one side.
Some of them are, yeah, one side or the other, I would think would work, some of them, we're just gonna have to be very careful with the, the measurements, like the Hispanic Heritage Club, their float is usually pretty wide, um, much wider than the vehicle, um, because Pablo does, he does a really good job, and that's why they always win.
Always win.
Yeah, so we just have to make sure that we, we, he knows those measurements.
Who's that, John Lewis?
Yeah, Mr. Lewis, and he's, his is very loud. Any other questions?
Thank you, Ms. Leah.
Yes, sir, y'all have a great night.
You too.
The exhibit opening's happening until seven, we've got rodeo over there with, uh, Mexican food, and it's Black History Month exhibit, so you're welcome to stop by.
Nice, thank you. It'll be open ten to two.
Monday through Friday.
Monday through Fridays. Solid waste study proposal?
See in the clock tick, I'm on, I'll, I'll be real quick.
You're right.
The, uh, the first thing tonight, Ms. Chairman, it, that we have for you is the scope of work associated with contracting with Mid-Atlantic Solid Waste Consultants to update our solid waste fee schedule, uh, as you can see in, in what was given to you there, it's been about four years since that was done. Uh, so it's time to update it again, they've given a, a budgeted price, which we do have in Solid Waste Fund, to be able to do this update, a price of thirty-two thousand, seven hundred dollars. Um, it does include a final presentation to the commission and obviously several on-site visits, uh, as they do this, which again, I think that this is the fourth, will be the fourth time they've done it for us. Uh, they would initiate the project, provided it's approved tonight by March first, and then it would take three to four months based on our review from staff time to present something to you for final consideration. It is the same contract, basically the same contract we looked at, and, you know, I didn't check back, but I, I think it's about the same price that we paid last time too. It was right in, right in the thirty thousand dollar range four years ago.
Before you go, Spaff, quickly.
It does go by really good, yes, sir, yes, sir, and, and that is our, you know, as y'all know, you've seen it, it's the basic guide that, that talks about capital outlay replacements, uh, this, this in your solid waste management plan, so it's, it's been a great document for staff to use for guidance.
Yeah, one of the things I wanna do, and I remember the conversation, we talked about, uh, uh, capital and ensuring that we stay current and, and, and not let ourselves fall behind so much so that things start to fail, and then we struggle to play catch-up, so being prior to where we wanna be when it comes to. That was five years ago.
Helps us too, with the lead time, we're seeing equipment deliveries and stuff like that, I mean, it's basically a year and a half at best to get a garbage truck now, front end or rear loader, to do that, so.
Yes, once again, things that citizens would not know, would have no idea of that, and the cost of these things. All right, you asking for approval of this?
Please, sir, if you don't mind.
Commissioners, are you ready to?
Some movement, Chairman. Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, we approve this on solid waste study proposal, begin what, March first, you said, sir?
Yes, sir.
It's March first, all right, and the, how, how long will it take them to?
Ninety to a hundred twenty days, yes, sir.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, show of hands, please, all right, let the work begin. Your report, sir?
I'm gonna try to go through it real quickly, cause I did have something, I was on a.
It'll be halftime.
A call about, uh, this morning that you gotta know about for the next meeting, so, uh, just real quickly, active construction projects.
Michael, can you just get that light as close as I can here, if you don't mind?
There you go, thank you, uh, this is the, the new fire station and where it stands right now, so they're, they're working on some site work, getting ready for a final punch list, which the new schedule that we've got shows that final punch list to be developed, uh, by the first part of March. So that's when we anticipate trying to go through and do that work, but just a couple of, a couple of shots for you there. Obviously, the pavement stripe still has to be done, Georgia Powers installed all the outdoor lighting, and the contractor will, uh, has started back to work, you can't see it here, on the front piece that's associated with Highway eighty-four, which is where some of the bad dirt was that we had to go in and remove, uh, that was excess from when Highway eighty-four was forelanded in there. Uh, this is the public works, it's ahead of schedule, uh, so as you can see, this picture was taken actually this week, um, from above, but, uh, all the red iron is on the site, red iron being, being set up. They have already completed work on the mosquito control containment building, where the chemicals and everything will go, so they completed work, they've got the roof on it. So, once they get the red iron up, uh, all the sheet metal, all the metal siding is on site, which is good, which is, had been a, a delivery issue in the past, getting those metal building, uh, panels, they're all on site. So what they'll do is they'll move off actually from away from that building once those panels start to go up, so they can clear the site for those folks to work, cause those panels go up pretty quickly. I think the, uh, the installation time really on those panels is, is probably two to three weeks, and they'll be done with that, provided the weather's good.
I'm being asked about the durability of the panels.
Uh, durability panels, uh, are, are a, uh, designed wind load for that area, uh, just like the other building in the back had to be, so they have to be designed for that wind velocity, actually, they exceed the wind velocity a little bit, because they fall a little bit above the margin. I mean, they only make so many gauges of that metal, so the metal we ended up using was a gauge, I don't say higher, but the one we had to use got us above the wind load requirements.
And it, it's, it's, um, longevity?
Uh, longevity is, uh, generally thirty years, thirty to thirty-five years on those painted panels. Um, I mean, that's just, that's just the guarantee, I mean, they galvanized, uh, and painted over, so the thirty-year really guarantee is, is just on the paint surface, so, you know, unless you just have a break in there that has occurred from a, something falling on it or something that, that separates that galvanization, and scratches that galvanization, then, you know, it should be good, it should not rust, the rust-free panels.
Joey.
Yes, sir.
On mosquito control over there, with the chemicals that they do store, will there be a containment wall just in case of a leak or anything?
Yes, sir, you may remember from the plans I talked about, it's never reported, the, the containment wall, you can almost see it in here, but it's a cradle, uh, for the better part of it, what, what it's looking like, what it's looking like is, is basically a, um, a curb and gutter that you would see, a curb that height, as a matter of fact, maybe a little taller, uh, in an area that's probably, can't remember exactly what it was, but it's probably thirty by thirty, this pretty good-sized containment pod for it, and so that chemical, if it does leak out, would have to crest that high curb in order to get out of the cradle. Uh, the other thing that you see there, um, that's going in also is the oil-water separator tank, um, for this facility. Uh, they, they were slowed a little bit in here, because everything, as you know, from here to here is automotive-related, so it had to have, uh, diamond casings put into, in the concrete, took a little bit longer for that to cure and be poured, so they were able to move out pretty fast o, on the rest of the concrete for that structure. So once the metal panels start going up, they'll move away from the building and really go back, concentrate on stormwater, and doing underground work away from there, so they can be out of the, out of the, uh, metal building folks putting the panels on. But they are ahead of schedule, it's looking really, really good down there to do that.
Mr. Brown, on the old facility, are we gonna knock it down or demolish?
Yes, ma'am, so what happens in the old facility is, um, that facility comes down completely, the concrete stays, because what was decided in there when it was reviewed by y'all and recommended by Clinton, was that would be a wash-down pad area.
Now, not the shed in the back, not the long one, that was the up.
No, sir, not the newer one, yes, sir, that one stay up, yes, sir. Uh, other thing, just a couple of other quick updates on a couple of other projects you're aware of. The EMS Administrative Training Building that's over on South Main Extension, uh, is, is completing design, those, you see the date, that should be ready, and provided everything goes good, we'll bring that back to you, of course, uh, to, to go ahead and get proposals out, but we just played letting that project to get proposals, uh, really by May, which is pretty good. We cleared all the permitting and everything, setback requirements from the city of Heinzville, so, so that's very good. Uh, Health Department Building, David Holt and I talked this week, as a matter of fact, we're meeting next week with L C P C staff to go over some draft drawings there, rather hit everything up front, you know, it is in the downtown corridor, so we, we do have to go through a review, uh, aesthetic review, which obviously will comply with everything that they need there. Uh, other thing I'll tell you too, is we've had some meetings, a little bit about what to do with the stormwater off that site, because as you know, you, you basically have to design to contain your stormwater, uh, to, uh, pre-development levels. So I, I gotta have a net no-outflow amount going out of there. So we've had conversations, uh, with Liberty Independent Troop, one of our partners already, and the Boy Scouts, who leased the Boy Scout pond from them, and they're very receptive to us being able to designate that pond as a stormwater relief point, it'll actually help the city also too, uh, and some of the control of the water that they do from that point downstream. So, uh, probably mean that in the end, we'll put a small control structure in that pond, but, uh, Trent and his staff are doing the, the topoes and the elevations on there right now, so we can get some drawings done on that. I was happy about that, the only other choice you'd have would be to put what's called a cistern in place, which is an underground storage container, and, um, they're really expensive to do that.
And they want to go behind the Justice Center, did we do that?
No, sir, actually, city, actually, the city did one, it's under the parking lot over here across the City Hall, yes, sir.
Yeah, all right, we, we have one, that's paint.
Trying to tell you. Uh, just a quick update on a couple of pieces of legislation, uh, cause the session is, is rolling, uh, just a couple of things of interest. You know, a few years back, the state asked every county or made every county, basically, put an anticipated tax amount based on what they saw in advertisements that the county ran previous to the village being assessed, and what they were was based on the previous year's village rates. And so they said, your tax bill is estimated to be ex, it, it's so hard to explain the process to taxpayers now, just like this year, where you get in there and you, um, adopt a millage, and that advertisement leads them to believe that their taxes are gonna go up, they're gonna, that their bill's going to increase by forty percent or whatever that number was, thirty-two percent, and it, it's not true, it doesn't happen that way. So this bill deals with some of those notification requirements that hopefully make them easier for citizens to understand and are more accurate on what's gonna happen, that's been, A C C G tried to, to get this, some work done on that, so that bill does address some of that, and, and that's Senate Bill four oh three. The other thing, uh, some restrictions on local sales tax elections, this is one A C C G dutton back. You know, right now, a few years ago, the state changed and said there are only two times a year you can have special local election referendums. This bill would change that to one in off-cycle years, that's not good for the government, who may have a splash expiring and may choose to go in and have a referendum, we definitely don't need to cut back to any less than two, cause that's already pretty restrictive. Uh, increase in state homestead, they're looking for a way to control tax rates statewide, so there's two or three bills that are out there, this is just one of them. Uh, House Bill ten nineteen is taking a look at a possible floating homestead exemption, that would actually do the same thing for what the K D W, Kemp Deloach-Williams does here, we would not be affected by a state homestead exemption floating, because we already have one. So it would put into effect or allow the voters to vote, to possibly put into effect in a county who didn't have a homestead, a floating homestead exemption, is what that would do. Uh, H B four twenty-four would, um, would basically set qualifications for sheriffs in the state of Georgia, uh, saying that they would have to be certified as a police officer to be able to qualify for sheriff, and it would also, um, mandate that they get supplements for each court they serve, so that bill's still out there working in committee. Um, Senate Bill three eighty-three and a companion bill, House Bill nine forty-six, uh, involve T-splash modifications. Right now, you have to notify the cities of a T, the potential call for a T-splash referendum. If you don't get a hundred percent of those cities to sign on to a mutual agreement, then your tax rate cannot be one percent. It will be less than one percent. What this bill does is say, just like splash, if you get fifty percent inside, a conglomerate of fifty percent of municipalities or a single municipality that encompasses fifty percent or more of the population of the total municipality levels, you can go ahead and call it, and you won't be penalized, basically, by having less than one percent. So, again, that could be some adjustment to the T-splash that's coming, I think that one's pretty favorably reported and probably will come out. And then the last thing is just a statewide freight plan, that, uh, since we're impacted by freight movement through here, I'm happy to see that. That could actually lead us to possibly some, some transportation dollars on our high, on our high-traffic corridors. I did wanna do a real quick update from you, for you, from, from, from Hampo, uh, because we meet, policy committee met, uh, last week, as a matter of fact, to go over some projects, and I'll run through them real quickly for you.
You're okay.
The first one is, uh, and this actually comes from the GDOT update, it is a, uh, S R thirty-eight connector, that's basically the freight connector out there. You see that the next milestone is authorized construction, you're pretty much up to date on that. The anticipated let, let date by GDOT, subject to earmark approvals at the federal level, getting approved, would be June of this year. So we have monthly status meetings on that, nothing has changed, because the federal budget hadn't moved yet. So our earmark request, favorably reported, would be in the F Y twenty-five federal budget, so, you know, on, once we start to see some movement on the federal budget, then those earmarks can be considered. Uh, what'll happen, obviously, without the earmarks in there, and we need a little over two million dollars for utility relocations in there, um, the project probably will slip into an F Y twenty-five GDOT state, is what'll happen there.
They approve their budget?
The feds are supposed to approve their budget by year-end, which they didn't do, and then they do, as you know, a continuing operational budget, uh, for the year, and that's fixing to expire again, in fact, there's conversation about government shutdown again, um, but they normally report the earmarks in the February timeframe, which won't happen this year.
So then we're looking at?
So, so.
Counting the year.
We're, we're looking at probably that budget, I mean, you know, you have a presidential election coming up, a lot of things are shaking there, obviously, but you, I, I mean, I feel like the budget's gotta get approved within the next few months, and then the earmarks will be announced, so we'll know. And depending on that timing is when, is when we would see what the construction schedule stays. Uh, the bridge replacement project there at Peacock Creek, is the one y'all talked about earlier, that's the Louis Frazier Project, and, uh, is, is authorized to go to construction in twenty-twenty-five fiscal year, which would be after July first of this year, cause remember their budget starts, just like ours. And then the last one is, is the median project, that would run all the way down, uh, down eighty-four, uh, through the middle of town, and, and you see that schedule there, really, really no construction schedule set, it's our, it's currently in design by a, um, contracting entity that, that GDOT has contracted.
Talk to us a little bit more about the median, so the public will understand.
So the median project would basically go from Flowers Drive to Patriots Trail. Flowers Drive, I believe, just out beyond, uh, Ralph Quarterman, out that way, so it would, easiest thing to say is it'd look like Abercorn. Is that you're gonna have median breaks where warranted, and it'll be up to that, that company and that design firm to propose that to GDOT, and then GDOT approve where those breaks occur.
And it is a state project.
It is a state project.
Not a Heinzville project.
Not a Heinzville.
Or a Liberty County project.
Correct.
It's a state project.
Moving on the state's time schedule, I think that's really what, what everybody needs to know there. There, there's nothing that the city or county need to do to facilitate that, except keep pushing like we already are, uh, at every meeting. Some of those active construction projects you see there is that Flemington Curve project, it's due to be finished this summer sometime in twenty-four, which is good. The bridge replacement at Taylor's Creek is actually on Fort Stewart, if you're going out that way towards Pembroke, that's due to be completed this winter. And then the resurfacing on some of that on Airport Road and, and out that way has been occurring, and, um, and I believe is about wrapped up, if I remember the report correctly. The construction of a bridge at Doctor's Creek is just in our metropolitan area, that's in actually Long County, and that's supposed to be finished in winter of twenty-five. I did wanna mention a couple of other projects that were actually GDOT projects that were done, and these were the intersection improvements, you may have seen them, especially if you tried to turn right off of Highway eighty-four and the general scribbling, they extended that lane, we'll look at that real quickly. And then one that we do have T-splash money allocated for, which would help with that break between Lowe's and Walmart and non-signalization, they would basically put a signal there, this is the first one, this is that, uh, the right turn lane that was extended on eighty-four by GDOT is fully complete, and here's a look at a layout for that intersection improvement with a traffic signal at Walmart, with Walmart being down here and Lowe's being across the street. So you see the movement and what would happen there with the left turn lane here, uh, and right outs there, and a right. So you see the movement and what would happen there with the left turn lane here, uh, and right outs there and a right in. So that stacking of that traffic in the dangerous area in here, that's been something the city's been working real hard on with Walmart and some of those folks, and, and have finally, have finally gotten them to agree to participate in that project. Uh, there is another project that is, that's coming over here. It'll be an extension of the one store that you see here. And, yes, sir, thank you. And, uh, these folks are participating in the cost of that. So you'll have, uh, T-splash dollars, city Hansel dollars, this developer dollars, and some Walmart dollars finally in that project. Walmart probably giving up more right away than anything, than dollars in that project. Uh, Lowe's not able to participate.
Diplomatically.
Was that diplomatic? Choosing. Other work items we're working on real quick is that airport expansion project, which has now gone to DOD for approval. Uh, we will be showing you the CIP budget. We're finalizing that. We'll show you that at your planning session in March. We did distribute, Ms. Richardson distributed the twenty-five budget calendar for y'all this year, and I have finished working on the digest millage calendar that, with Ms. Roberts in the Tax Commissioner's Office to be able to set that in motion coming in. We did meet again, uh, concerning health insurance.
Sure, let me, let me interject right here. Our, our desire, commissions, is to not have our tax bill go out as late as it did this year. It worked much better for us when it went out.
Right.
First of December at least. Preferably, preferably maybe November even, but so we're trying to be on the front end of it, to, to ensure that they don't go out January.
Little Committee on Health Insurance met again with the broker that we're working with. We're waiting to be able to draw down the latest data on health insurance claims. That won't come to us until March. So we should be back to you at the, either at the end of March or first part of April to talk about that. It's a, uh, July first renewal date, but we have to know by June first, 'cause open enrollment starts then under the federal tax statute that allows you to do deductions before taxes. We are a- act- out there right now shopping property and casualty insurance rates. Those renew May first. So those, those are coming a little faster, and Mr. Mosley has set up a meeting with Mrs. Spata to go ahead and review the MWBE provisions and look at some updates to that to get them current and to, to satisfy some concerns. There were some calendar events, I noted. Uh, we are moving forward, as you know, with the impact fee. Planning and scheduling consideration, if you will. The first public hearing on impact fees is scheduled for March fifth. I got BOC meeting there. That's not correct. That meeting will actually occur earlier in the day, and we'll make sure we get you that time. The commission planning, as you know, is March twenty-sixth, and then the countywide mid-year review is at eight o'clock and not eight thirty on the twenty-seventh. The other thing, Michael, if you can queue that up real quickly, I, as you're aware, several, there have been several lawsuits filed against opioid manufacturers nationwide and specifically in the state of Georgia. You're aware of one we signed on with that distributed funds straight to county governments. And if you remember, that money is contracted with the Board of Health for specific things as outlined in the opioid settlements, and they are working on that. We've made a payment to them, and they distributed their first report. This is opioid settlement money that actually came to the state of Georgia. It's going to also be dispersed to Georgia counties through its developmental behavior disability, uh, boards region-wide. I need to walk through this real quickly, and I'll try to explain it, and I've made you a copy to take with you, because at the end of the day, what you're gonna have to do in your next meeting is choose one person to go to that regional meeting and vote on a slate of folks that will be proposed at that meeting. This is a little bit, I'm not gonna read all these to you. These give you the numbers of what's gonna be dispersed to the state of Georgia over the next eighteen years in opioid settlement funds. You see the state's share, uh, you see their share, and then the state of Georgia and the participating local governments, which are a hundred and fifty-nine, uh, counties and some cities, are, will be bound by an MOU on disbursement and use of those funds. These are the participating local governments that are included in the settlement. You see the numbers, and you see who's eligible under those. You actually had to signal that you wanted to be a part of that, uh, about two months ago, I believe it was. I sent something back to them. Actually, you took action in here on that, I do believe. This, the trustee of the funds that come to the state is the commissioner of the, uh, DBHDD. There will be created an opioid settlement advisory commission, or a GO SAC, which is basically in those regional areas. And you can look at the flow chart of how all that will flow, uh, to the state and out to the advisory councils. These are the people that are mandated to be on the council, and then the last bullet point, three people to be appointed by participating local governments. A little misleading, that's three people for the whole region. And so what'll happen is you'll come up with one name to submit to possibly be one of those three. When the region gets together, they'll decide, based on the one name that's submitted by all the counties in the region, who those three will be. So you don't get three appointments. You basically get to make one recommendation, really, uh, for the board.
How would they make their decision based on?
Based on, you would hope, based on criteria and knowledge of the person being involved with, with either, you'll see some criteria in here, direct involvement with opioids. I don't necessarily mean use, but you know what I'm saying. Um, having someone impacted, working on a board that has done that, working for a health department, working, you know, knowledge. Knowledge and exactly what's going on in the realm of opioids and abuse. Here are those regions, and you can see we're Region Five, and the purple on the bottom's a pretty large region. So there's gonna be three representatives out of all those governments that are able to sit on that council. And you see their task to review grant requests from within the region. So basically what'll happen, my understanding is, what'll happen is, though, that's the overall advisory council, individual counties and eligible folks that you saw on that list can then apply for those funds, much like we had to do with our money for different aspects of handling the opioid crisis. These are the six, th- this is the composition of those racks, and who's got to be on there. And so basically, the participating local governments in that region, as I said, are responsible for the three remaining GO SAC members, uh, for that region. Each local gets one vote. We've kinda covered that. Uh, they sent a form today for us to be able to take that action, and then it tells about what I've already mentioned, how that slate is determined by a majority of those present at the region board at that time, the regional meeting, and the slate can only be amended by a majority of those present. So, say that, they don't necessarily have to choose on people that the local government submit. They can turn one down, turn two down, submit their own slate. These are the times of those meetings, so whoever it is that you recommend will have to go to the one in Baxley in Appling County, uh, on March twenty-sixth. This is really what you have to focus on for use of the funds, if you apply for use of the funds. This is the same exact list that we had to pick from for use of our funds. So I think the settlements are exactly alike, uh, both of them that came out. There, there are the uses. And that's basically it. And I hate to hit you with all that at one time, but we just got hit with it as counties today, or got an overview today of it, so, um, I don't know how you, what you wanna consider to try to name that one person countywide to represent, you know, to actually get a vote, say to represent you, but to get a vote on who the members might be, um. We do have a representative that we appoint to the behavioral health board. I mean, um, if you want me to, if you wanna consider them, or you want me to reach out to them, or if you have some other method, you know, the Board of Health or whatever, uh, that you wanna try to do, but we just need to come up with one name. We don't have time to really run advertisements and, and we run it up on our website and do some things, but, uh, there needs to be one person appointed by the board at the next meeting to try to go to that regional meeting.
So let's reach out to that person that's appointed to that board.
Do we have someone serving on the behavioral health?
Yeah.
I thought we, we do.
We.
It seems like we always, because they meet in Glen County.
There's one of them. We don't.
I think it's that one.
Might be the board.
And I don't know, um, the Cohen Center. I mean, she,
Very true.
I think, I don't, she's not a resident of Liberty County, but she works in Liberty County. That would, she's in it, and she's knowledgeable.
Right.
I don't know. Y'all, you, y'all may need someone else. I don't think we have anyone on behavioral health. That would be the person.
Okay.
But you could check it and see.
Okay, I'll check both, uh, and I'll shoot you an email. I've got contact information. I will. I'll come back to y'all. Okay.
Good prospect.
Yeah, I, I'll let you know. We'll, we'll swap some emails, and you can let me know who you, you know, if you need me to make contact with anybody ahead of time and see if they may be willing to serve and, you know, some of those type of things. Actually, they won't, I don't think they'll need to serve at one time, and that's to cast that vote.
That's to cast the vote for?
Unless they get up, end up getting elected as one of the three, but there's a lot of folks in, in those counties.
Maybe a good choice if she's able to do it.
Yes, sir.
And that's all I have for you. I'm sorry it took so long.
All right, no, sir. We need to hear that. Sorry.
I had a question for you.
Go ahead.
When you say the impact fee, is that the one coming from the inspection and permit side?
No, no, sir, no, sir. This is the impact fee analysis that we hired a consultant that you have to hire to do, to do that. The, the other schedule of fees is gonna be presented by Mr. Mosley at your planning session.
Okay.
But you cover everything else.
Now, two other roadway cuts, and what that means by that, Commissioner, is we have ci- cities that are cutting across county roads without permission to supply someone on the other side of water, and no one from the county has been notified. But I've talked to Mr. Brown about this already, so this is something that we need to put some teeth in, because six months after they cut these roads, you drive across them, there's a drop. They will not, citizens in that area will not call the county, I mean, the cities who provide them water in the rural area, they will call the county. So we need to button our hatch on that, and, uh,
Before you move on that, so what is the?
So that, so.
Protocol?
Well, hell, there is a protocol. So if you are a utility company or developer that needs to go across, go on our easement, you have to have an easement access, and there's a process. You have to apply to the county engineer for that. So you apply, there's no fee involved. That's for two reasons. One, to make sure that you put it in correctly and nothing happens there. The other side is, so we can map it and know it's under that road and have, and have some, uh, have some feeling there. So in this situation, uh, none of that occurred.
Yeah.
Basically. I did, I did send an email out to the engineers for those cities and make them aware that we had a process that they needed to follow.
Okay. And the other, another one is, we have an issue in the county trying to find material to fix driveways. Can't get rocks crushing run, asphalt milling, so we need to look for an alternative somehow.
Everybody having their problem?
I don't know about Liberty County. We have our road.
A driveway or the road?
Driveways with, like, where the mail carrier runs in the rural area. You got a big sink by the mailbox and all that.
It's any, it's any kind of material that's got a granite composition, a granite composition to it, uh, 'cause granite's hard to get still, and it's on a, um, a rationed-out basis still. And so what those, um, road contractors used to do that were doing milling, where they pull that old asphalt up, now what they're doing is milling, is milling it, storing it, recycling it, laying it back down again, so it can be used.
That's what's happening to that big mound down there.
That's what's happening to the big mound down there. That's exactly right.
Can't get it.
But yes, sir, we can look and see if there's any,
Precious commodity.
Anything else that, you know, not aware of it, but.
And the last one, I still say we need to get on board with Blake.
Got that on, got that on your agenda for planning for y'all to discuss, yes, sir. And, and by the way, have gotten that list. Chairman and I are gonna look at it. I really haven't, you know, again, if you've got anything, I think my deadline on my calendar for doing that is by next week, is to try to finalize that agenda, so.
And we think we can still get, for us, this Mr. Mosley now is buying lunch to ride together. If not, I don't have to get, not only have to engage the two on the end down there to ride with me.
I'm ready. And I appreciate it very much.
All right, they all forget of the order?
Yep.
Chair, take a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
What time was that game, Mr. Chairman?